Welcome to AT&amp;T's teleconference service. Please enter your access code, followed by the pound sign. To join the conference as the host, press star. Otherwise, press pound. Please enter your host password, followed by the pound sign. There are one participants on the call, including you. You are joining your conference as the host. For a menu of available commands, press star pound.
All right. Time is now six o'clock. I'm going to call a meeting to order for July the 20th, 2021. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu. Councilmember Papino. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. Do we have any reportable action from closed session? Mr. Attorney.
We have council received information and provided direction. There's no reportable action.
All right, thank you. Would you like to now join us in a silent prayer, followed by a flag salute? We have a citizen this evening that's going to lead us in the flag salute, Mr. Bob Balyer. So after we finish the prayer, if you'd like to just come up and lead us. Thank you.
And justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, do we have any agenda approval additions and/or deletions from council?
Do you want me to do the replay statement?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, July 23rd at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, July 24th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14.
Thank you, Ms. Hubert. All right, item F, agenda approval additions and/or deletions. Do you have anything from council?
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to pull the item, but I have a question on J7. If I just ask a question or we need...
Would you prefer you pull the item to ask the question or?
All right, I'm going to pull J7.
All right, and I actually have a question as well on the item. So I'm going to pull J6 as well. Anything else from council? No? Okay. Yes. Pushed up a little button down, right down there.
Go. All right, very good, very good. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to request that I be able to give a COVID update during the city manager's office update later in the agenda. I know that's not agendaized, but I wanted to ask if I could provide that to the council and the public.
Yeah, why don't we do that under communication? Would that be okay?
Or the city manager's office is right above communication.
Yeah, I didn't, I saw that that was kind of an odd item, but that, either one is fine. They're both right next to each other.
Okay.
We'll do that.
Sure.
All right, with no other items, then we'll move on to our presentations this evening. Tonight's presentation will be Certificate of Appreciation for Dr. Kevin Mackey, presented by our city manager, Mr. Lorenzo Heinz.
So I wanted to, first of all, bring Dr. Mackey up. And Dr. Mackey is a medical doctor with our Consume Services District, and he has been pivotal in establishing COVID clinics here in the city of Galt and also reaching out to our seniors. And so what I wanted to do, doctor, is read you what was on our certificate of recognition, is that the city council of the city of Galt, on this 20th day of July, 2021, hereby wishes to present this certificate recognizing your substantial dedication in organizing COVID-19 vaccination events in the city of Galt and arranging mobile vaccine units for our senior citizens' community. The city council would also like to recognize your time and energy in administering the vaccines at these clinics. So, Dr. Mackey, thank you so much.
If you're, is it your wife that you're with? If she'd like to come up and take a picture up here, that'd be fine.
Is this gonna, it's okay, good. No buttons to push. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Heinz, thank you. This is deeply humbling to me. As I mentioned, you have a very energetic community that is very engaged. So this was very easy. I am just honored and humbled. And so I just wanted to express my appreciation to you and thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I think, I think we're good, just their distance, yeah.
All right, we'll now move on to public comment.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make a quick comment?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
On Dr. Mackey, I know we spoke before the meeting, and I just want to give you my personal appreciation for what you did here in the city of Galt. But I think it should be recognized that not only were you working in the city of Galt, but the city of Elk Grove and other jurisdictions in the county to make this same thing happen. And so, thank you for all you've done for the Elk Grove Unified School District in working with them, as well as the city of Elk Grove. And I know you were up north, too. So this is something that, work that was happening during this pandemic when there weren't many medical leaders out there, and Dr. Mackey is one of them. So, thank you so much, appreciate all you've done, and will continue to do, my friend. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize. Does any other council want to make a comment on this? Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor?
I would also like to thank you, Mr. Kevin Mackey, you did a good service in Galt, and thank you for your best service. Thank you.
And I will piggyback on that as well and say thank you. I know the one that was the, that stood out to me the most was your work with getting the mobile clinics for the people that couldn't, you know, the seniors that were, that were kind of homebound. So, that was important, we have a lot of those in the community, so thank you, sir, we appreciate it. All right, we'll now move on to public comment. Ms. Hubert?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the, sorry, my glasses are fogging up, listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may also be submitted, as noted above, via the options listed on the first page of the agenda. As a reminder, emails received from pubcom@cityofgalt.org by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting will be distributed to city council and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting. However, written public comments will not be read out loud.
All right, thank you. And just for the public's knowledge, we are going to be doing public comment a little bit different, although you're obviously welcome to do public comment live in the chambers if you want to fill out a speaker form and come it up and turn it into either our city manager on the end, and I'll pass it over. We're also allowing public comment, for those of you watching at home, by telephone, which is something we've never done before when we had live meetings. And that number is actually 888-808-6929, and the access code is 9302199. And this information is on the Agenda Online, city's website. So if you call in, you will be called upon on the particular agenda item. Do we have any public comment this evening, Ms. Hubert?
I have one written comment coming in.
All right, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Balyer.
I wanted to piggyback on what the council has been telling the doctor, recognizing him for his activities related to the vaccinations specifically of seniors. So on behalf, as a commissioner, as the chair for the Commission on Aging, I would also like to add my voice in thanking you specifically for taking care of the seniors that we all advocate for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, do we have any comment on the phone, Ms. Hubert?
Are there any public comments on non-agenda items on the phone? And there is a few second delay, so we'll just...
Okay, yeah, we will give a few second pause each time we do this. Working through the logistics of this right now.
Okay, I don't have any comments.
We'll move on to item I, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Since Councilmember Papinow is not with us this evening, we will, actually, I'm supposed to start with the vice mayor. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to report on, regional report.
Okay, Councilmember Vandenberg?
I have nothing to report at this time.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Lozano?
Nothing to report.
I just wanted to say I attended the, it's not actually a commission or committee, but I did attend the event by the beautification committee this last weekend, the community cleanup. And I wanted to thank our department head, Craig Hoffman, for coming out again and participating in that. He's participated in several of these now, so I wanted to just thank him. All right, so moving on to our information consent calendar, it is recommended that items 1 through 7 be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. So the items that have not been pulled are item 1, the minutes of the special meeting of June 10th, 2021, and regular meeting of June 15th, 2021. Item 2, the receive and file warrants for period ending June 30th, 2021. Item 3, the treasurer's report for period ending May of 2021. Item 4, the approval of Fourleaf Incorporated and On-Call Building Consultant Services for Plan Review Permitting Building Official and Field Inspection Services for the Building Division. Item 5, the task order number 1 with SOMAS for short-term construction inspection services. Do I have a motion to approve those five items? Moved by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Your aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Passes 4-0. All right, we'll move on to the items that were pulled. First one is going to be J.6, the Award of the Wayfinding Signage Program Contract. And I only had just a thing, and I apologize, I got the packet from Mr. Selling, and I was only able to look at it yesterday, today. And there was something I was trying to find, and I did find it as I got in the chambers here this evening. I just wanted to point out, because we're, if we prepare to pass this and award this contract, that there was a discrepancy on one of the signs in reference to the, the signs, the verbiage on the signs, it actually has the digit "four," like "fourth," instead of "F-O-U-R-T-H," which is how it's actually spelled on our street signs. And I know that's weird, because growing up on Fifth Street, I always used "five" for my address instead of saying "fifth," but it technically is "fifth." So I just want to make sure that was addressed.
Yeah, Mayor Farmer, that is correct. The, those streets are actually spelled out and not just the numerals. So that's the kind of thing that we will go through with each sign. We'll approve the design, the layout, before they manufacture the sign.
Okay, that's the only thing I had. Other than that, is there any other council member that has any comments on this item? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve item 6, the Award of the Wayfinding Signage Program Contract?
Mayor, if I may, just a public comment?
Oh, yes, sorry, sir, thank you. Public comment, do we have any, Ms. Hubert?
Any public comment on J.6 on the telephone? No comment.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion to approve item J.6? Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu, and I will second that. Can I get a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye, motion approves 4-0. Next, item J.7, the subject is the Police Department Building Reriff Capital Improvement Program 421B, the Award of Bid. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Selling, the only my, I just found a clarification, because this project is, you had put 20% contingency. And this is like a little bit unusual to me, usually contingency between 5% and 10%. Can you just explain to the public and myself? Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor, Sandu, you're absolutely correct. Typically contingencies on most construction projects are 5% to 10%, depending on the size of the project. For a project like this, a roofing project, and we've got a building that's going on 18, 19 years old, and we've definitely had some leaks over the years. And so we're asking for a higher contingency, 20% versus a typical 10% on a project of this size, in order to address any potential issues, deficiencies that we find once they open up the roof to put, start putting on the new one. So if there was water damage that, you know, could have potentially damaged some of the structural members of the roof, we would definitely want to replace those. And things can get kind of pricey quickly when you start getting into the structure. We don't anticipate that to be the case, but just to, you know, essentially hedge the city's bet and be able to get the new roof on time before, you know, hopefully the rains come in the fall again, we would, you know, ask for the higher contingency. And the thing is, is if we didn't ask that and we did run into some issues, then we could be delayed, you know, getting an additional item on the city council agenda in a timely fashion and not hold up the contractor's work, so. So that's the reason that we're asking for a higher contingency. We would not use it, obviously, if we don't need to, and we hope that we won't.
Thank you. And then also, I believe, the higher contingency, because that building can be essential building, we have to open that, we might be contract, well, come up low more requirement, that's the reason you requesting 20% contingency, right?
Yes, you're absolutely right. Again, the police department is what's considered an essential building, much like a hospital, and you obviously understand the importance of that. And so we definitely want to be able to quickly address any issues that may come up, should they.
Thank you.
I actually had some questions regarding this item since it was pulled. So I noticed we had three options that were presented, option 1 being the highest and option 3 being the lowest. And staff is recommending that we go with the middle option, which is what I would probably expect, to try to take a little bit of a conservative, middle-road approach to this. But in reading, and I know, Mike, you and I had a little bit of a dialogue, and you were going to have someone maybe elaborate on some information should this item come up. The two lower, the two lower bids, or the two lower options, should I say, included a different type of product called TPO versus the most expensive bid, which was for a different type of product. And my question is, although each of these, each of the three options that we were presented with all have the same workmanship warranty of five years, they do differ a little bit in the manufacturer warranty, the lowest being 15, the next being 20, and then the highest being a 30. What I would like to know is two things. One, what is the difference between the product that's different than the options 2 and 3? And, well, first, let's start with that question. Do you have that information?
Yes. So, options 2 and 3 both are specifying a product that's called a thermoplastic polyolefin. And so that is a, and you can see, well, not everyone can, as the staff report indicates, the option 3, the cheapest option, is a 15-year warranty, five-year workmanship, as you noted. But it's only a 60-millimeter-thick membrane that is put on the roof. So thinner membrane, as opposed to option 2, which is an 80-millimeter, again, polyolefin material. And those materials tend to, over time, from the sun, from the UV, ultraviolet of the sun, tends to potentially cause cracking and where you can have leaks from that cracking. The material tends to harden over time, it loses its plasticity, if you will, its elasticity. So the option number one item, which is the thickest, it's two 60-millimeter membranes, and that is what they call a KE, which is a ketone ethylene ester, KEE is what it is. And so that is, it uses a different type of material, and I got to check my notes here real quick. But this, this uses, it's a polymer that's modified from PVC, and it, what it does is it's a much more pliable, holds its elasticity over time much better, so it's much more resistant to the UV of the sun. And so you don't get that cracking and potential for leaks like you do with the other olefin material. So that's really what you're paying for, is just a higher-grade, more elastic-type material. And it's also easier when you do, if you, you know, if you did have a penetration, you put in, you know, maybe an antenna or something on the roof that has to, you know, go through the roof, it's easy to weld. They do like a plastic welding process to seal it back up. Whereas if you have a leak on one of the olefin materials, you have to use a more adhesive-type material, you can't weld it. So it's kind of like a, you know, a tape, if you will. And that also is, you know, again, not as good, subject to the UV, so you don't get as good protection. So the KEE material is definitely, you know, the higher-quality material over a longer period of time, and hence you get the 30-year warranty versus a 15 or 20.
Okay, good to know. So my thought process here was on that, and thank you for the information, that's very helpful, is, I know, so the building was built in 2004. At the time it was, it was built, there was an expectation for the current roof to be 20 to 25 years. We currently did not, obviously did not make it to that. The roof's been leaking for at least a couple of years now. So, when I see manufacturer warranties, 30, 20 years, I mean, you got to take those with a grain of salt. I mean, is it really going to be 20 years? You know, you probably should assume maybe 15. So my, the reason I bring this up is because to go from option 2, which I greatly appreciate staff, you know, you know, very cognizant of money, obviously we want to make, you know, the wisest decision, but this is a big, this is a pretty big expenditure, as far as something that's been in need for a long time. We want to do, in my opinion, the best bang for the buck. It basically, we're looking at like a 20, 28%, for 28% more, we're getting what sounds like a far superior product, and we're getting a 10, 10 additional years on the manufacturer warranty. Now, again, I know that's, that's, you know, we're talking about $100,000, but we're, you know, when you're getting ready to spend, you know, almost a half a million dollars, you know, to try to get maybe a 20-year warranty out of what I would consider an old, an older product that's been used in the past, is what I kind of found from my research on the TPOs, what's been mainstream, whereas this other product is more like where the industry is kind of moving to. I just would like the council just to make sure that we're making the right decision, that we want to go in the middle and maybe catch ourselves, you know, in 15 years, having to spend a bunch more money to fix something, whereas maybe it's more prudent for us to spend the little bit extra money, the 28% more, and go for something that we know is going to be, you know, get us, get us through the life of the building possibly. So I would just like to open that discussion to my fellow council members and see if there's any thought process on that. Does anybody have any thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, dollar per year spent, would we gain in what the mayor has presented?
You know, it's hard to predict, but what I would say, as the mayor indicated, you're looking at about a 28% additional cost of around $130,000 or so, and you're getting 10 additional years. So 10 additional years on 20 is a 33% gain. So, you know, you're 25% more money, get a 33% more, you know, life, lifetime warranty. So there's a little bit, you know, in the, in the city's favor from that perspective. And I would tell you, what it came down to for us as staff is just, you know, we're already needing an increase in appropriation based on what we had previously budgeted. So looking at, you know, just what's the best bang for the buck, so to speak, given the city's budget constraints, that's the reason that staff is recommending option 2. If I didn't have that budget constraint, I'd likely be recommending option 1.
Thank you, that was my next point I was going to ask. That's all I have.
And I know the life of the building, I mean, I think, Mike, you and I were talking about what's the life of the building, like, do we want to spend, is it prudent to spend money on something to get a 30-year warranty if you don't think the building's going to be there in 30 years? I mean, if we're talking about maybe the Littleton Center or something, or, you know, another older building, City Hall or something, it would be a different discussion. But, I mean, the building was built in 2004, I would expect it's going to be there probably another 20, I mean, 30 is, I don't know, but that's the only reason I brought it up. I just want to make sure that we're making, because, I mean, it sounds like a lot of money, but in the grand scheme of what it costs to put a roof on here and how often we do that, I just thought it was worth discussing. But if it is, I understand, you know, we are in a budget constraints, and I just don't want to be penny-wise pound foolish as all, so. I don't know. I would actually like to, I appreciate Jay's comments, is there any thoughts? Is the council want to stick with what staff, Rich or Paul?
Yeah, I, I'm happy with option 2. I think we can't forget the 10% contingency, that, you know, there's another $100,000 for what if, when they peel the layers back. And it's, I don't know if it's possible or not, but I've been around construction a little bit, and I know that sometimes contingencies aren't enough either, you know, once you start peeling stuff back. I'd be happy with option 2.
Vice Mayor?
You know, I'm happy with the option 2, because, you know, I'm talking option 1, everybody like it, but we have to look at the budget. That's the only reason I'm towards option 2.
Thank you, sir. Any last thoughts, Councilmember Vandenberg?
No, I agree with the Vice Mayor.
Okay. All right, well, I will go with, I will go with the feeling of the council then. So with that being said, if, do we have any further comments? So, with that being said, if, do we have any further comments on this item? No? Do we have any public comment on this item?
No written comment. Let me check. Any public comment on J. 7? No comment.
All right. Looks like we have no comment on the phone and no comment in the room. So, I will entertain a motion to approve item J. 7, Police Department Building Re Roof Capital Improvement Program 421B Award of Bid.
Moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Vanderburg. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Vanderburg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Motion approves four to zero. Okay, moving on to item K, Scheduled Matters Notice of Public Hearing. Our first item this evening is gonna be subject Northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District Public Hearing, approving the engineer's report confirming the assessment diagram and assessment to be levied and the levying the annual assessments for fiscal year 2021 through 2022. I will refer to my script's hearing, hold on a sec. All right. We're gonna open the public hearing, and then we're gonna hear our agenda report from Mike Selling. So, we are now opening the public hearing. Mr. Selling?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is for the Northeast Lighting and Landscaping District. Annually, the city is required under the statute that governs that district to, to do the, the assessment for the fees charged to maintain the district. Mr. Bill Forrest is here and will make the staff report.
Thank you, Mike. Bill Forrest, Senior Civil Engineer and the Lighting Landscape District Engineer. First item before you is their Northeast Galt Landscaping District. Next slide, please. The recommendation is to receive a presentation and conduct a public hearing regarding the levy of the proposed assessments for the Northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2021 to 22, and the related engineer's report, which is attached to the staff report. Upon closing of the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the Northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District Engineer's Report and levying of annual assessments for fiscal year 2021 to 22. Next slide, please. This is the district, predominantly the northeast area. The, within the district, there were no new annexations, but there was a de-annexation. The Veranda and the Parlin Oaks projects, which you see on the exhibit outlined in green, were removed from the northeast area, and those have either, have been annexed into the Community Facilities District 2020-1, or will be, which is item K. 5. Next slide, please. As mentioned, there were no annexations, two de-annexations, and there was one subdivision, the Morales Estates, which is an old map that was parcellized. So, that's why the parcel count differed from past years. The assessments per parcel are fixed since the inception and have, and the typical assessment for the single-family residential partial, depending on which benefit zone, which is a table, within the engineer's report varies from $51.70 per, per lot to $301.85 a lot. This district and the next district, the west side, receive a general fund subsidy. And for the northeast, L and L, it will be $230,379 for this fiscal year. Next slide, please. I won't bore you with going over the recommendations again. There were some questions received about some of the, in the engineer's report, there's what's called a budget, and has expenditures, and then the revenue, and staff received some question about the, some of the meanings and, and definitions of some of the line items. First question was, in the budget, you won't see a general fund subsidy, but what you will see is what is called transfers in. And that transfer in varies a little bit from the $230,000 number that I made. So, there's a small amount coming into the district, not from non-general funds into the district. And for the northeast, that equated to about $1,000. The next question was about the uniform allowance line item. That was a proportional cost. Essentially, we take the, the total uniform cost for personnel, and then there's a percent associated with how much work they do in the northeast area, how, how much work they do in the west side area. And so, that number reflects that proportion. What is meant by professional services? Typically, in the past, that had been landscaping contractor contracts. So, it could be that if we need to pull in irrigation technicians. Now, the one thing is Parks and Rec staff is providing the landscape services, so there may be a, a need to, of the professional services money to be, if you will, put into the personnel line item. It also covers things such as specialized gopher and ground squirrel control, park light maintenance, sport field light maintenance, and associated with the irrigation, there's backflow protection, devices that need to be tested annually and certified annually. Staff, I know, has received training, but previously, that used to be a contract out services. Heat light and power. Starting with fiscal, fiscal year 1920, we actually separated out utilities, electricity from heat, light, and power. We just haven't changed the name, so heat, light, and power is everything but electricity associated with the running of the district. So, water, sewage, wastewater fees, gas, if there's gas associated with it, and then electricity is now a separate line item. We just haven't changed the name of that budget item. Solid waste disposal is for the solid waste franchise, franchiser, cow waste to pick, pick up collected waste from parks and recreation and landscape areas within the, the various districts. Administrative costs are, were adopted by the council, I forget what year, but essentially, it's a proportion that's been established for Finance Department, Public Works Department, associated in a proportion to the work done for each district. So, I just wanted to go over some of those questions, and those same responses apply to all three districts. The numbers may vary, but particularly the definitions. So, with that, I turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Do we have any comments before we go to public, to see if there's anybody on, that wants to speak on this item during this, the hearing is open? Do we have any council discussion on this particular item? So, I, I just wanna make a quick comment. I know this is a, this is a topic that comes up in the community from time to time and about these lighting and landscape districts. There's, it's no secret that these districts are something that need to be addressed at some point. This council is very cognizant of that, and we are currently, you know, trying to think of ways that we could remedy this. This is, for those of you who don't know, these lighting and landscape districts are basically underwater, which is what the subsidy that Mr. Forrest referred to, somewhere roughly at $300,000 between just the east and the west side. And there, and I've had comments, many comments sent to me via email and from citizens asking, you know, why do, why are we, you know, why are we not getting, you know, sufficient level of service at this particular location, so on and so forth, whatever, ongoing conversation about that. And, and I just wanted to just make a quick analogy for those that happen to be watching. You know, you have to think of it, so these, these landscape districts are, they have no cost of living. There's been no increases since 1996, when Proposition 218 made it impossible for us to raise those. So, what these guy, what these, what these districts started out raising is no longer covering the cost. So, think of it as like having, you know, a lawn guy that started mowing your grass in 1990, and whatever that cost was, you, you're now still paying him that cost. And is he still mowing the grass? Yes. But are you giving, getting the level of service that is fair for, for, for what things cost now? No. And so, although these, these monies are still used to do those, those services, it's not to the level that some would like, and we, we acknowledge that. And so, I just wanted to bring that up and, and tell the public about that, and, and so that people can better understand what these, what these districts are and, and that we need to find a solution for them. So, do we have any with that? Do we have any comment on this item?
Any public comment on K. 1 on the telephone? No comment.
Okay. Do we have any comment in the room? Obviously, no.
No written comment.
Okay. Well, if we have no further comment by council...
Mr. Mayor, may I have a, just for the clarification, Mr. Forrest, thank you for giving us that engineering report. This assessment we doing every year, right?
Correct.
Okay. And that's assessment like in, in the report, 51.7, some of the lot and some of the lots are $301, right, and 5 cents? And can you very in a brief, just how your engineering report, different level of service to the different lots, or can you, let me explain to us?
I believe in the engineer's report, there's a table and, Table 2, Benefit Zone Summary. Actually, looking at it, there, the facilities maintained appear to be all the same. I know historically, back in the 90s, what was done was for each benefit zone, a budget was prepared. You know, within this zone, we have X square feet, you know, to maintain. We have so much sound walls to maintain. We have, you know, parks and to maintain, and then that was divided by the number of lots within the, within that benefit zone. And as mentioned, with Prop. 218, we were no longer able to do that methodology, and so, at that point, the assessments were frozen for all the benefit zones in the northeast area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, we have no public comment. I just wanna say a couple of things. I, I fully intend to support the engineer's report and moving forward, and I will, given the opportunity, vote for it, so we can get it passed through. I know we legally have to do some things here, so. But I wanna take this opportunity to thank our Parks and Rec Department, all of the data since November, December, January, actually, in maintaining landscaping and landscape corridors and parks. And certainly managing the outside contractor of the last couple of years. It's a tough job, and as you've heard, we have no, we don't have enough money to maintain the level of service that we provide. Also, wanna thank Public Works for managing this and all that you do to manage the districts and the engineer's reports every year. With that being said, we need to do something different. And this is a conversation that I think we've had for the last year or so. Certainly, before that, I've had the conversations before that. But I hear from the community regularly that the level of service being provided to our landscape medians in parks, which is significantly underfunded, as mentioned, is unacceptable. And I, and I agree. I agree. We don't have enough money. As mentioned, in this particular zone, there's $230,000 going from the general fund to help maintain it. And even at that level, we're, we're having difficulty maintaining it to a level that, over time, has been acceptable by the community. Now, I wanna reiterate, our Parks and Rec Department, those that are working on maintaining it are doing an awesome job with what they have. You know, we, we talk about analogies, you know, it's, I'll kinda use a similar analogy to what the mayor said, you know? Think about, if you would, if you're old enough, having a paycheck in 1990, 91, 92, whenever, and that amount of that paycheck that you receive then, you're trying to pay your bills today on that. Not housing or anything like that. Just think of your utility bills and, and what you get for a dollar for electricity today as opposed to in 1991. And that's what we're facing. So, we, we really, really need to get active and, and start addressing this issue. Other thing I wanted to point out to the public is, not only do we have this subsidy from the general fund, which can, is money that can be used in other areas. It's non-restricted funds, and so, we can use it for other things. But the administrative costs in this particular zone is only at about 12 and a half percent. So, when you're looking at the budget that we're putting together for these lighting landscape districts, we're only spending about 12 and a half percent on that on administrative things. Everything else is going into our, our lighting landscape districts. And so, I just wanted to make those couple of comments, and I'll, I'll certainly have more comments at the end of the last lighting landscape district that we hear tonight. But, you know, it's important that we find out what the public wants. We talked, I talked about it during the Corrigan Corridor item we had a couple, month ago, I guess. We need all the green area that we have. That's expensive to maintain. Does the public want less? If that is, if that's the case, well, let's do that, cut our costs, and, and provide that service. So, I'll stop there. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the time. And, and I, like I said, I'm happy to support moving this, this item forward.
Thank you, Councilmember. Good, good points you made there, for sure. Does either of the other council members have any comment on this? Do we have any comments on the phone? Checking one more time.
Any telephone comments on item K. 1? No comment.
Okay. Well, with that, I'm going to now close the public hearing. Well, with that, I'm going to now close the public hearing. And looking for a motion to approve the item K1. Looking back through my pages here. Item K1, which is the Northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District approving the engineer's report, confirming the assessment diagram and assessments to be levied and levying the annual assessments for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Item passes four to zero. All right, moving on to our next item. Item K2, subject is going to be the West Side Galt Lighting Landscape Maintenance District 1990-02. Public hearing approving the engineer's report, confirming the assessment diagram and assessments to be levied and levying the annual assessments for fiscal year 2021 through 2022. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. And we will hear a presentation from Mr. Selling again.
Well, I'll just simply quickly state again that this is the annual action that we have to take per statute to continue the levies on the properties within the district and ask Mr. Forrest to give the staff report.
Thank you. Next slide, please. I'll skip the reading, save it for the last. And next slide, please. As mentioned, the West Side is on the west side of Galt. I can't say exactly on the west side of Highway 99 because there, you see, the magenta color on your exhibit is the West Side District. And there are some areas just on the east side of Highway 99, most particularly off of Amador and Carroll Drive. Let's see, anything else? It also does include a portion of the industrial area, basically from Live Oak South to, now, L&amp;L Wood Products, which is the northmost parcel. They will be in the future, with their expansion, they'll be conditioned. And so we'll be coming to with them annexing into the CFD 2020-1 and removing. The, that particular benefit zone in the industrial area only pays for streetlights, just as a point of interest. Next slide, please. There were no annexations or subdivisions of the existing parcels within the district. Assessments per parcel as, like the northeast area, have been fixed, has not changed since the district, well, particularly the passage of Prop 218. Typical assessments for a single-family residential parcel range from $36.62 to $221.80, again, depending on what benefit zone the parcel lies. The general fund subsidy for the West Side District for fiscal year 2021 to 2022 is $66,143. Next slide, please. You're receiving the presentation and have opened the public hearing. Upon closing of the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the West Side Galt Lighting Landscaping and Maintenance District 1990-2, the engineer's report and levying of annual assessments for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. And I thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Forrest. So again, this is an item just like the first, but this is the west side of town. Since we're on this side, could you, just for the public that's watching, this will be a good time to possibly point out for those seeing this for the first time, if that's even possible, that most of the older part of town is not in the lighting and landscape district. Is that because this was formed in 1990 and anything that was built pre-constructed pre-1990 is not in that? Is that the reason?
Basically, it, the west side of town had a major growth development in the 80s to the early 90s. And so, if you will, the old part of town, that wasn't subject to assessment because it wasn't being built in the, in the time.
Which is another reason why this is, these districts just seem to not function properly and really generally unfairly for many. My old house that I just recently moved from last year was, was kind of in a weird little pocket where there was not a lighting and landscape district. The house was built in 88, I believe. So we have, you know, not only these districts underwater, but there's a majority of the community that's probably benefiting from maintenance, clearly is benefiting from maintenance, but yet is not paying into those. So something we definitely like, Councilmember Lozano brought up, definitely have to fix. So do we have any other comments from council on this item before I go to see if there's anybody on the line? All right. Do we have any callers waiting to speak on this item?
Any callers on item K2? No comment.
Okay. All right. Well, if we have no comment, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing on item K2. And I'll be looking for a motion to approve the West Side Galt Lighting Landscape Maintenance District 1990-02. Public hearing approving the engineer's report, confirming the assessment diagram and assessments to be levied and the levying of the annual assessments for fiscal year 2021 through 2022. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Councilmember Vandenberg.
Seconded.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Passes four to zero. All right. Moving on to our third item is the City of Galt Landscaping and Lighting District Number 3. Public hearing approving the engineer's report, confirming the assessment diagram and assessments to be levied and levying the annual assessments for fiscal year 2021 through 2022. Go ahead and open the public hearing for lighting and landscape district number 3. And we'll hear the report from Mr. Selling.
And once again, this is the annual action that the city must take per statute in order to continue the assessments on the properties within the district, which are the primary source of revenue to fund the activities. With that, I'll give it to Mr. Forrest again.
Thank you. She read my mind. The lighting and landscape district was formed in 2005. This district does have a cost of inflation factor built into it. For the past year, the CPI that is identified in the engineer's report increased 1.43. The engineer's report identifies that if the CPI inflation factor is less than 1.5, we are able to charge that minimum percent. So the assessments for this district reflect that detail. This district is in the areas in blue. This is truly a West Side District, as identified in the engineer's report. It was formed with the Schmitz Ranch Development, which is that rectangle that you see in the upper left corner and the Creekside 2, Unit 2 Development in the far south corner. Next slide, please. There were no annexations or subdivision of existing parcels. I've already talked about the assessments and the influence of the CPI for this past year. The proposed assessment for the single-family residence is $352.50, which is, represents a $5.22 increase from last year's assessment. The last bullet item is that the expenditures are projected to exceed revenues by $29,000 approximately. And this district had built up a fair reserve. And so that difference will reduce that built-up reserve. The, this district with the, does have the inflationary factor. I think the problem mostly with it is economies of scale in that we have fairly small subdivisions scattered throughout on the west side. So there's, there's not that mass that you saw, for example, on the northeast area exhibit. So we just wanted to point it, point out to you that particular detail. It does not receive a subsidy from the general fund, unlike the other two districts. Next slide.
I do have a question for you, Mr. Forrest. Is this one not affected by Prop 218 because it was formed after Prop 218 passed in 1996? Is that why?
Correct.
Is that the last slide?
Just the recommendation. You've received the presentation and have opened the public hearing. Upon closing, first, I should include, I'm here to answer any questions the council may have regarding district number 3. Upon closing of the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the City of Galt Landscaping and Lighting District Number 3, engineer's report and levying of the annual assessments for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. And I thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any comments from council members on this particular item? Go ahead.
Thank you again, Mr. Forrest, for the presentation. I think it's important to point out that, especially in this district, we have a CPI index inflator, right? And we're still using reserves in that area. And again, when you look at that budget for that area, it's slightly higher administrative cost because, like you said, it's a smaller area that we're dealing with, but it's still only at about 17%. So, you know, it's, we will run out of money there, too, I suspect, soon. If we're using 30,000 this year of a $68,000 reserve, it's quite possible.
It is quite possible. I will mention that this district built up a reserve of about $95,000. So it honestly, it just depends on, on the extent of the expenditures and the revenue coming in.
And I think that, I mean, for those that have went out to buy a stick of wood here recently and paid, I've paid seven, almost $7 for a fence slat, a five-foot, dog-eared, four-and-a-half-inch-wide slat. Crazy. So we're going to continue, I believe we're going to continue to see it. I just want to point out a couple of things real quick, just some, some feedback, if you will, for next year. On the previous document that we were reviewing, the West Side one, on page 4-5, I think it is, yeah. And I'm just going to this to make, to make a point here. The Table 5 on the assessment rates, it shows the benefit zone numbers, 1 through 15. And then attached to that are the names of the areas. So Quail Hollow, Pheasant Run, Greenwood, Creekside. If you were to, if you go to the previous document for the north area, northeast area, it just has the benefit zone number. Is it possible that next year, we could get that to look like the assessment table on 4-5 on the second one? To have also the name of the benefit zone with it?
Yes.
That would be awesome. And I just saw a couple of things that looked a little different between the two, the reports. And not that it made it any more difficult to read, but I think for, you know, if somebody picking it up for the first time, started reading through all three of them, it may get a little confused. So I would just suggest maybe next time, having it a little more standardized, I guess, if you will. But other than that, awesome reports. And I'll tell you, we, it's nice to have a civil engineer in the organization. My former organization contracted this out every year. And Bill, you've done an awesome job at this. And I'm hoping that, that the five of us, four of us today, but the five of us with Councilmember Papino, can, can help take care of some of these issues so that we're not continuing to bang our heads against the wall and Armando isn't chasing either employees and trying to get more done with less and, you know, or contractors or whatever we're doing, you know. I just, I think, I think we need to do something sooner than later, as I've mentioned. And I won't beat the dead horse. But I just want to say, $300,000 a year of subsidy is a hard pill for me to swallow. It really is. And I think that past, you know, people in the organization before us just kind of kicked the can down the road. And, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not willing to do that. I think that our citizens deserve better and certainly, you know, our staff does. So, I mean, I don't get, I don't get as many phone calls as probably Armando about, or Mike about weeds and grass, but I do get a fair share. And, and, you know, it's not fun to keep saying we're trying with what we have. So thank you very much. And I'd be willing to move this item.
Thank you, councilmember. You made great points again, actually took the words right out of my mouth on a couple of things. This is a can that I refuse to kick down the road and I want to move as quickly as possible as this, as I think the rest of my fellow councilmembers do, to figure out a solution for this. This is not something I think that we want any of us to be left hanging out there. And I do want to say thank you to Armando and to Mike, you guys actually. So I do get a lot of comments, texts, emails, and even stuff on social media, people asking about things. And I send them right off and you guys are actually really responsive, like, I mean, literally, it's like, yep, we'll take care of it right away. I mean, and in lieu of everything, and you guys not having enough funds to do what needs to be done. If there's an issue, you guys are quick to respond to it and try to figure out, you know, how you can get that done and you make it happen. So I just want the people that are watching out there to know that, that we are, you know, doing what we can and rubbing two nickels together in some respects to, to, to keep people happy until we can find a solution for this. So is there any other comments from other councilmembers?
Yes, I do, Mayor, for me.
Go ahead.
On item, on this 3.5 inch, you know, you stated that this fund has a balance carrying over, but it shows on 3.5, there's a transfer in of $11,000. Could you clarify?
Yes. That was in answer to the previous question of that, for the two districts where the transfer in line item and the budget didn't quite match what we were saying for the, for the general fund subsidy. So that $11,000 represent- So that 11,000 represents a transfer in from non-general fund. And that's identified in, on Schedule Five of your recently approved budget, midterm budget. So I literally went to that table and saw, okay, the transfer's in, the transfer's out. It was about six non-general funds transferring in 11,000 into this district.
I just wanted that clarification for the public, and then also, it's, I wanted to clarify for the public that this has, this fund has a balance, the others don't, and we transfer into those from the general fund. And each of these three items that we voted or going to vote on are treated independently, so it's not like we ever slide money from one lighting and landscaping district to the other. I just wanted that out there for the public. Thank you, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, council member. Any other comment from council on this particular item? All right. Do we have anybody on, in the room or on the phone on this particular item? Ms. Hubert?
Any public comment on K3 on the telephone? No comment.
All right. Well, with that, I will now close the public hearing on item K3. And it will look for a motion to approve the City of Galt Landscaping Line District Number Three, approving the engineers' report, confirming the assessment diagram and assessments to be levied and levying the annual assessments for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Item is approved 4 to 0. All right, now moving on to what I call part of the solution. Item K4, which is the annexation of territory to the Community Facilities District Number 2021-1 Public Services, specifically the annexation of number four, Cordosa Two. And I will open the public hearing. And Ms. Hubert, has the notice of public hearing mailed, has been mailed and published in accordance with the law?
Yes, notice was mailed and published in accordance with the law.
All right, thank you. As, actually, I need the report from city staff. Is that from Mr. Selling?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. City staff needs to request a continuance of the public hearing on this matter to the August 17th regular city council meeting in order for staff to finalize some information required by law as it relates to identifying all registered voters in the annexation area.
Okay. So you're asking for continuance to the August 17th?
Correct.
Regular meeting? Okay. That, do I, before I look for a motion to, actually, do I have any, do I have any comments? Public comment on this item? Still have to ask for a comment even though we're looking to defer, right?
Any public comment on item K4 on the telephone? No public comment.
Okay. I will go ahead and close the public hearing.
Air, actually, sorry. Don't close the hearing.
Do the defer, okay.
Because i-if we continue it, then we don't have to, it makes the notice process simpler. So just hold it open and continue it to the August 17th meeting.
Okay, so no closing even after we do the motion vote? Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, well, looking for a motion to defer this item to the August 17th regular city council meeting.
Moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Motion approves 4 to 0. Okay, moving on to our next item, which will be item K5, the annexation of territory to the Community Facilities District 2021-1 Public Services, the annexation of number five, Parlin Oaks. We'll open the public hearing, and I will ask the clerk if the hearing was mailed and published in accordance with the law?
Yes, notice was mailed and published in accordance with the law.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll now hear the report from staff.
Good evening again, Mayor Farmer and council members. This item is to consider annexing the Parlin Oaks Residential Development into Community Facilities District 2020-1. Mr. Bill Forrest will provide the staff report.
Thank you. First, I'd like to apologize for dominating the agenda on the first opened council meeting, and I forgot how cold it is to sit here underneath the staff table, but thank you. The Parlin Oaks subdivision is a, at the southwest corner of Carillion Boulevard and Walnut Avenue. It's a high-density residential project, private streets, about 200 or so single-family lots, very similar to the Elliott Homes development on the Kitty Corner, the Veranda Project. Parlin Oaks does include a multifamily, 80-unit, multifamily unit that's located more to the east, close to Carillion Boulevard. Just as mentioned, this is the attempt to address the, the inherent issues with the lighting and landscape district. It's also combining a previous CFD 2005-1, which was a public safety. And so this district, there are three components to the assessment in this district. The first one, special tax A, is for public services, not only including police services, but also city government services being provided to the district. Special tax B is particularly to the Consumus Community Services District Fire Department. About, about 10 years ago, they started coming to us that they needed additional income beyond normal property tax, so their special tax B. The last element is special tax C, which is, if you will, is the maintenance component and the successor to your lighting, landscape district, typical things. There are, there will be CPI factors included in future assessments. For this particular district, compared to the previous annexations that you've seen, the special tax C is relatively small compared to the other subdivisions. And the main reason why that is, is the special tax C included a pavement maintenance portion, and since the Parlin Oaks development is a private street development, now, the homeowners' association associated with that will be responsible for the maintenance of the private streets. So, and they're also taking over the maintenance of the frontage landscaping along, well, there is none along Walnut right now, but there is some along Carillion. And when Parlin Oaks is fully developed, that landscaping will be on a private parcel and to be maintained by the homeowners' association. So that's why in, if you compare the special tax C for Parlin Oaks, it's a factor smaller than what you may have seen or noticed on the previous annexations. With that, I conclude. Any comments? And I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. And for those of you that always ask, what's going on the corner of Carillion and Walnut, this is what we're talking about. This project is that project. We get that question a lot, so. I know Mr. Hoffman's not in here right now, but I just wanted to just make a comment about this because we're talking about this project. As you mentioned, this has an HOA, so issue of this project. This project under, contrary to what a lot of people believe, this contract is not, this is a market rate project. This is a high-density project, yes, but it's not a market rate. I mean, it's not a, it's not something designed to be low-income subsidized, Section Eight or anything like that. This will be a market rate project, has an HOA. It's a gated facility because it has its own streets inside and everything. So I just, there's a myth going around, or there's a, there's a perception that this project is somehow, you know, low-income, meaning going to be bad for the area and neighborhoods. I just would like to just debunk that for those that are watching, so. And this is an example of, oh, I know we didn't talk about the previous one, but these CFDs that we're talking about tonight, this is something, for those that have been paying attention and watching meetings over the last 16 months on Zoom, this is something this council has been systematically doing, is putting these, putting these two new, we have two new facility districts that we've been putting all the new developments into, one at a time, slowly and surely. These are, these are not tech, these are not creating districts that people live in yet. These are all the new developments that are coming online. And basically, this is development paying for itself. These are, this is an example of how things should work, not like the L&Ls, which are broken, but the, these new developments will be contributing their fair share to police, fire, landscaping, road maintenance, all those things through the two fees that you mentioned. And so this, this is, this is part of the solution. This is something we've been working on for a while, and this is a part of that solution of fixing those L&Ls. So we're moving, you know, fixing things moving forward, and it, you know, and then now we need to, you know, look back and, and correct the others. But I don't have any questions for you specifically, I just want to make those statements for those that may be watching. Do we have any comments from the council on this particular item? Do we have any public comment in the room? Looks like we have one. Sir bring that up. Just hand it to Mr. Splendario there. Just please state your name and if you, where you live.
Michael Harland, representing Blue Mountain Communities, the proponent of this project. I actually live in Carmichael, down the road. I just wanted to thank staff, Bill, and, and city council for all their help in bringing this project forward. Mayor Farmer, I appreciate your comment about the affordable and clarifying that for the public. And just one more time, Bill, thank you very much. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
And actually, my scene, Mike, reminds me, on page two of the report, the second paragraph, the very last sentence talks about this land is owned by Richmond American Homes of Maryland Incorporated, Maryland Corporation. That is the previous item that we continued. This is owned by Walnut Drive, comma, Galt, comma, Incorporated. So it doesn't affect anything else, but I did want to correct that, that mistake that I, I put into the copying and pasting.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir, for speaking. I appreciate that. And, and, you know, you've brought a product to Galt. We haven't built an apartment complex in probably almost 40 years in this town, so although some people are not fans, I think it's a, it is definitely something necessary. And I appreciate you putting the sign up out there now that shows what's being there. It's diverted a lot of questions. So, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. So do we have any other comments on the phone regarding this item?
Any public comments on K5 on the telephone? No comments.
All right. Ms. Ms. Hubert, have any written protests been received?
No written protests have been received.
All right. Ms. Hubert, have there been any persons that are registered to vote within annexation number five, Parlin Oaks of Community Facilities District 2021? And if so, the number thereof?
No. The County of Sacramento Registrar Voters has certified that there are no registered voters within annexation number five, Parlin Oaks of Community Facilities District Number 2020-1.
Ms. Hubert, are the owners of any taxable property in annexation number five, Parlin Oaks of Community Facilities District Number 2020-1 have, has consented to holding the special election on July 20th of 2021?
Yes.
All right. Are there any further comments online or on the phone, excuse me?
Any public comments on K5? No public comment.
All right, with no further comment, no comments from, from council? No? All right, we'll now close the public hearing, and public testimony will no longer be accepted. All right, Ms. Hubert, do you concur that the special election was held on July 20th of 2021?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I'm now looking for a motion to approve resolution of the city council of the City of Galt, California, calling a special election and submitting to the qualified electors of territory proposed to be annexed to the City of Galt Community Facilities District 2020-1 Public Services, County of Sacramento, State of California, the question of levying special taxes within that territory, annexation number five, Parlin Oaks. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg. Have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Motion passes 4 to 0. Ms. Hubert, you have next item?
I hereby conduct a special election by stating that the official ballot has been opened and that all votes are in favor of the proposition presented on the ballot.
All right, looking for a motion to approve the following resolution. Resolution of the City of Galt, I'm sorry, resolution of the city council of the City of Galt, acting in its capacity as the legislative body of the City of Galt Community Facilities District Number 2020-1 Public Services, County of Sacramento, State of California, declaring the results of a special election in such community facilities district on the proposition of the annual levy of special taxes within the territory proposed to be annexed to said community facilities district to be, pay the cost of certain services to be provided by the community facilities district, determining that the territory proposed to be annexed is added to and part of said community facilities district with full legal effect, and ordering the recording of a map of boundaries of said community facilities district, including the territory annexed thereto, annexation number five, Parlin Oaks. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Councilmember Vandenberg.
Second.
I will, I'm sorry, I was going to say, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Resolution passes 4 to 0. All right, I'm now looking for a motion to introduce by title only and waive further reading of the following ordinance. Ordinance of the city council of the City of Galt authorizing the levy of special taxes in a community facilities district, including certain annexation territory identified as annexation number five, Parlin Oaks, into the City of Galt Community Facilities District Number 2020-1 Public Services, to complete the annexation of the property to the community facilities district. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Ordinance passes 4 to 0. Okay, moving on. Next item is going to be item L, a regular calendar. Item this evening under that is going to be from the city manager's office. Mr. Hines?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mike, Bill, thank you so much for an excellent presentations, by the way. So, Mr.- So, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to give an update on COVID-19. We had initially removed this item from the agenda, thinking that the pandemic was subsiding. However, Tina, let's go to the next slide. However, we're starting to see an uptick in the activity in cases related to COVID-19. As you can see, Sacramento County has gone up, and all of these are measured since our June 15th meeting. And so Sacramento, the cases in Sac County have increased by 4,400 cases during that time period, or 4%. The number of deaths in Sac County have increased by 37. Here in our city, in our area code, I'm sorry, our zip code, the Galt number of cases here in our zip code is... Has increased by 70 during the... Between the last meeting and this meeting. It's about 2% of our population. Luckily, we haven't lost any souls to this pandemic during that time period. Next slide, please. So on June... On July 15th, Sacramento County Public Health issued an media alert recommending masking indoors for all individuals regardless of vaccination status. In less than a month, Sacramento's daily case rate has risen drastically, from 3.8 cases out of 100,000 population on June 20th to 14.2 cases per 100,000 population on July 20th. The increase in daily cases is in part due to the highly contagious Delta variant. And according to Sacramento County Public Health Officer, those who have not vaccinated or... Who are not vaccinated or only partially vaccinated remain highly vulnerable to this variant. Next slide, please. 61.4 of all eligible Californians are fully vaccinated. 9.2% are partially vaccinated. 48.3 of all eligible Sacramento County residents are fully vaccinated. Within our zip code, 41.8% of all eligible residents have been at least partially vaccinated. So that leaves about 60% of our folks that have not been vaccinated. Next slide, please. The city continues to administer the COVID-19 rapid antigen test at the Parks and Recreation Office at 610 Chabola. Test results are available within 15 minutes. No appointment necessary. And testing is available every Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines will be available on August 5th at the Parks and Recreation Office, also at 610 Chabola Avenue, from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Next slide, please. And so that's our update for now. I just wanted to make sure that the council and the public are aware that, given the high number of folks that aren't vaccinated here within our community, if the variant raises its head somewhere, we are somewhat vulnerable here within our zip code. So I wanted everybody to be aware of that. And Mayor, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hines. Is there any discussion on this particular item from the council?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Vandenberg.
We are no longer under the tier system?
Right. We're no longer under the tier system.
Is there any anticipation of that coming back? Or just... At this point, it's just precautionary?
There is no anticipation that it's coming back, but as this variant increases the numbers, the governor and the State Department of Health Services and the CDC will act accordingly. I believe if we were still in the tier system, we would probably be in one of those lower, more restrictive tiers, given the surge in cases.
Did they give any explanation if they suggested all people wear masks indoors if you're vaccinated? I don't really understand the logic. They did not give any explanation?
Well, that's just the... That's the county's recommendation. They're worried about the variant. And while one who was vaccinated, you know, may be protected from the variant, you just don't know who you're in the room with. And since we don't, you know, we don't really ask people for their vaccination status, we don't know who has been vaccinated or not. And so the wise direction is just precaution and just assume everybody's unvaccinated. Wear your mask.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you very much. Thank you, councilmember. Any other comments on this particular item?
Do we have any public comment on this item, Tina?
Any public comment on City Manager update? No public comment.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to our next item, M, Communication. Do we have any communication this evening?
No communication.
All right. Next item will be Item N, City Clerk's Report. Subject is going to be the Galt Youth Commission Adult Mentor Appointment. Ms. Hubert?
Okay. So the recommendation is Vice Mayor Sandu appoint a community member to the Galt Youth Commission to fill a vacant position and remaining term ending December 2022. Vice Mayor Sandu appointed Mary Magga on October 6, 2020, and she submitted her resignation on June 2, 2021. The City Clerk's Office posted the vacancy on social media and on the city's website. An application was received from Talon Harris, who meets the required qualifications. Vice Mayor Sandu?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hubert. I would like to appoint Talon Harris to the Galt Commission Committee. The reason I'm going to appoint him, I did interview him, and I strongly believe he has a strong passion about helping other youth, along with the good past experience in being a mentor. I'm confident he will add great value to the youth committee and its purpose. Tina, I would like to, I believe if he's on the phone, if he wants to make any statement, could you check? He may be on the...
Yes. Is Mr. Harris on the line?
Yes, I am.
Would you like to make a comment?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to say that I'm incredibly honored to be appointed to this position, and I'm really looking forward to giving back to the youth of this community and really just putting my foot forward and making you all proud. And I just want to say thank you again for this position and the honor. Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. We appreciate you applying for the position. Mr. Vice Mayor, would you like to say anything else?
No. Thank you, Mr. Harris. I'm full confident you will be... Add great value to the youth commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to... Congratulations, Mr. Harris. So moving on to Item O, Comments by Staff. Mr. Hines?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to first off let the council know and the public know that I will be presenting the visionary Galt Master Plan, Galt Market Master Plan, to the Consumer Services District Board of Directors tomorrow night. This is at their invitation. We had a sort of a two-by-two with them a few months ago, and the two members of the board felt the entire board would benefit from this presentation. So I wanted the council and the public to know that, that we've got an outside entity curious about our vision here in Galt. I talked with the general manager there at CSD, and he said, of course, all members of the council are also welcome to attend the meeting as well. And he wanted me to convey that to you all. So the meeting starts tomorrow at 6:30. And so myself, Craig Hoffman, will be there, representing the City of Galt, and I wanted to let you know that. Next up, we have Armando Solis, our Director of Parks and Rec, with some good news about some of our programs for the summer.
Armando Solis, Parks and Rec Director, if you don't recognize me behind this mask. I just want to talk about a few things, some exciting things. But first, I want to start off with that July is National Parks and Recreation Month, so I just wanted to bring that up. Want to thank all my staff for all the hard work they do. And you guys still hear me? And just let everybody know I appreciate them. Now, we're going to get into some Galt and Parks and Recreation Presents. We have some great events coming up. We have Concerts at the Vet, Sounds of Summer Series. So August 7th, 21st, 14th, and 18th, we're going to have concerts in the park from 6:30 to 8:30. Gates will open at 6:00. We'll have food trucks. And right now, we're trying to secure a beer garden for the area. And this is who we have on tap for those four days. We have A Touch of Magic, the Bad Habits Band, the Corduroys, and Inner Soul. And we'll finish off the series. And then when the weekends that... These items aren't going on, we'll have drive-ins at the market. So opposite weekends, on the 14th, 28th, 11th, and 25th, we'll open up the gates at 6:30. Movie will start at dusk, and it'll be $25 per car, regardless of how many people are in the vehicle. These are the movies that we have slated. We'll start off with War with Grandpa, Godzilla vs. Kong, Soul, and Peter Rabbit 2. These movies are either PG or PG-13, family-friendly, in order to have our citizens come and attend with their kids. And then I want to thank my staff. Since the last council meeting, we had our Independence Day celebration. Our Parks guys did an incredible job getting this area ready. Jackie Garcia, with... Along with our market staff, did an incredible job putting these events together. Our run, our parade, our fireworks show. You know, without these employees that take so much pride in these... In their jobs, you know, they really take on that Galt spirit of wanting to get things done and getting them done right for our citizens. So I want to personally thank all my staff. You guys have any questions about anything that's happening?
Just that I'm assuming you guys will be putting all this information out on the social media pages and such for the city, right?
Yes. We were waiting after today. We wanted to make this presentation to you first before we took that out to the citizens.
Great. Thank you.
May I add, for the movies, we are bringing in some nonprofits to do the concessions?
Oh, okay.
So to help them try and get through this also.
Great. Well, I look forward to the events. It's great to see this kind of thing and look forward to the music and the movies. And I'll definitely be sharing those posts out there in the community and try to get the word out. So does anybody have any questions for Mr. Solis on these items?
I have a comment, not necessarily a question. Just on behalf of, I think I can speak for everybody on the council, I'd like to, you know, please let all the employees know, we appreciate all the hard work they are doing on the lighting and landscaping on a minimum budget. I know the complaints probably won't, you know, diminish, rightfully so perhaps, but I just want to extend that gratitude out that they are doing a lot of good things with a minimum effort. That and the Fourth of July parade... Fourth of July, great job. Seemed like it went off very well. Thank you.
Yeah. I was going to comment later about that, but since you're up there, yeah, the parade was great. You know, not really knowing what we were going to expect this year because coming off of, you know, last year was really rough and no parade, no anything. And so I was very pleased to see the amount of participation, not only participating in the parade, but the amount of spectators was phenomenal, and it was really fun. I'm glad I... And I know council... Well, all the council members were in the parade, as far as I know. All of us had a good time, I'm assuming. It was great. The weather was not too brutal, so we all survived. And those of us driving old vehicles like myself were able to get through, and that's a success. So thank you. And pass, yeah, pass my appreciation on to your staff, too, for great, all the way across, the run, the parade, the event in the afternoon, the fireworks, all of it. So thank you.
I'd like to just make one more comment. I'm sorry, I forgot one. I want to thank Assemblyman Cooper for getting us a grant of $700,000 for the replacement of Walker Park. I know we have a representative of his office here, and so if you can please pass that on, I would appreciate it. Without that grant, I don't know that we could have done that project. And we probably have about one year left on that, on that artificial term. So I wanted to thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And your name, and I've... We've met, I just... Yes. Thank you for coming tonight. And please, yeah, pass along all our... Thank you for that. And I'll have to reach out to Assemblyman Cooper directly and express my gratitude. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Solis.
Next up, we have Amy Mendez, our Economic Development Manager.
Good evening. Just wanted to put a quick reminder out there to folks about the C Street Enhancement Project Workshop. So this Thursday, we're going to be having a walking tour. The walking tour starts at 3:30 at Papa's and Wings on C Street, and the open house follows at 5:30. It is open house style, and so the feedback we're looking for is from residents, from businesses, and from, you know, anybody who wants to give feedback on the construction and the design as it relates to the C Street corridor. So we've done a pretty extensive outreach to the businesses and to the community. We mailed postcards last week to all of the businesses and property owners who are really within a boundary surrounding C Street. A Street would be the boundary on the north, down to Melody on the south, Fourth Street to Fairway and Pine. And so businesses received the postcard inviting them to the workshop and the walking tour. An article went out with the newsletter last week. We've done a pretty robust social media push, and we've paid for a lot of advertisement on Facebook and Instagram. And so we're hoping that we can get a good cross-section of the community to give feedback. We're looking for businesses and for citizens. This is a main gateway into the community, and so we want to make sure that it's really an impressive project at the end of the day, understanding the concerns with the businesses. And so just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that. They can go to our Instagram page or Facebook. We also have, on the front page of the website, there's a new banner that went up today. So if you click on the banner, it goes straight to the C Street webpage. So we have a webpage dedicated to it. You can sign up to attend the walking tour. And I believe the next workshop is going to be August 19th. And so we'll do the same sort of social media outreach on the 19th workshop. That one will be more of a presentation of design concepts that have been come up with, that we've come up with as a result of the feedback that we've gotten. So just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that and hoping to see council and businesses particularly out there to give some feedback. That's it. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez. Does any of the council have any questions for Ms. Mendez before she leaves? Oh, okay. I just want to thank you for your outreach on that. I think, you know, I don't know if anybody in this room, except for probably you and I, were even part of that first, when it was talked about way back, right? And so that kind of... Then it kind of died away. But I'm glad we kind of just hit the reset button because we have a lot of new business owners, and we have a lot of new people that occupy some of those buildings on C Street. And I think, I think generally that people are going to be, you know, excited to see us doing something in that corridor. As someone who just cleaned that corridor, like this last weekend and picked up trash, it was like horrendous. And Craig was right along my side, so he knows. It was terrible. And so I think, you know, we do want to beautify that. We just, you know, want to make sure we do it with the full engagement of the people that are stakeholders in the area, which, you know... And I got a robo-call, by the way. You guys are doing robo-calls about that. We got one at the shop, and I was like, what is that about? And she says, it's about the C Street project. Wow, that's kind of impressive. So definitely seems you guys are doing maximum outreach, so I appreciate that.
We did. From our business license database, we've sort of pulled all of the businesses that we have information. So they've received personal phone calls, a lot of them that are impacted by the construction on C Street. And then we've done email invitations as well as the robo-call. So there's been... They're probably going to be sick of hearing from us, but we just want to make sure that they are engaged, especially the ones that are impacted on C Street, with any type of roadway detours or that, you know, may be impacting them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
And next up, we have Community Development Director Craig Hoffman.
Hi. Well, good evening, councilmembers. Tonight, I wanted to let you know upcoming meetings. We received our comments from HCD on our housing element, and we will be having some upcoming meetings. August 12th, we'll be going before the Planning Commission. On August 17th, we'll have a City Council Study Session to review the comments that we received from HCD and present the housing element more and attract changes, so you can see their comments. And then come back on September 7th for a public hearing for adoption. So I'll make sure we get you those documents early, so you can review them. And on all three of these meetings, they will be posted in the Galt Herald, make sure that we're doing outreach. And the Galt Herald has done a great And on all three of these meetings, they will be, uh, posted in the Galt Herald, make sure that we're doing outreach, and the Galt Herald has done a great job. They've already done at least three or four, uh, nice stories about the housing element, and we'll try to see if we can get some more information out there so the public has it. But you'll be seeing that coming forward, and the comments from HCD weren't that bad, so.
Mr. Hoffman, what was the, the Planning Commission was the 12th. What was the date for the workshop for council?
It'll be August 17th.
17th, okay, thank you.
And then on September 7th, 7th, we'll come back to the council for adoption of the housing element.
Okay, thank you.
And that's what I have right now.
All right.
I did keep the bike tire that I found this weekend.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Director Hoffman. Next up is Public Works Director Mike Selling.
Hi, good evening again, council. Mike Selling with Public Works. Just a couple of quick things. Uh, first off, as you just heard from Amy, um, she has just been, uh, really enhanced, I think, the, uh, the outreach effort, along with our consultants, outreach, uh, sub consultant, uh, for the C Street Improvements Project. You heard all the, all the various, uh, you know, ways that they're, they're trying to engage the community, and, uh, I just wanted to thank her for all her efforts on that. We're looking forward to a good, uh, uh, project walk, starting at 3:30 on Thursday, and then, uh, going into a workshop, uh, just kind of a free-form, kind of open house, uh, I think as she, as she noted, uh, starting at, I think, 5:30 on Thursday night. And so, uh, I think it'll be a good kickoff to it, and we're looking forward to getting a lot of good input from, uh, from the community on that. And then the other thing that I wanted to make the council aware of, the city, uh, received some, uh, grant funds through the oil, uh, it's the oil program. I forget, there's, I think there's one letter in that acronym that I'm forgetting, but, uh, essentially, this is, uh, this is money that the state provides to, uh, to, uh, local agencies to try to get, uh, folks that are changing their own oil, uh, to recycle it properly so it doesn't, uh, pollute the environment. And we had our first event back on Ju- July 10th, and got about, uh, 20 folks or so participating there. We're looking forward to our next event. It will be, uh, September 25th, uh, is the target date for that. And probably looking to hold an event about every other month or so until we, uh, either run out of funds, I guess, or run out of time. Uh, we got about $5,000 this year. And, uh, so basically, folks can come in and get a new filter, uh, for free, uh, paid by the program, and we've also got oil change kits too. And, uh, so we're working with O'Reilly Auto Parts on that, and, um, so just want to make sure that the community is aware of that opportunity, and, uh, that's all I got for you tonight.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Director Selling. Um, we checked in with the Galt PD. No comment from them tonight. Uh, Chief Small is back there. Uh, checked in with our Human Resources Director Stephanie Bannstein. No, no comment from, uh, Human Resources. Uh, Tina, any, any comments from you?
No comments, thank you.
Okay. City Attorney? No.
No comment.
All righty. Very good. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that concludes staff comments.
All right. Thank you, sir. We'll move on to item P, comments by city council members, future agenda items. We'll start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give me the opportunity. Uh, first of all, thank you for the staff, uh, gave us a good report, uh, on all the agenda items, so we can make a decision. I also especially thank you for the police department. Uh, I seen they're very active, uh, day and night, and I know there is some Cadillac converters stolen in the city, but they are very active. Uh, you know, last night, uh, I'm going to tell you in a, uh, public, uh, my wife, uh, coming from home to the hotel, somebody following her car. She just called me, and I was, uh, was outside, and then the next minute, I don't know what happened, there's, there's two police officers just show up, and then they stopped the car, that, that car rider, they said they just follow the wrong color. They said there's nothing wrong with it, they just follow the wrong color, and that was fine. So I was very happy. The police department is very proactive in this town. And I also like to thank you, Amy Mendez. She is, uh, you know, Economic Development, uh, Director. She approaching the old develop- developer where they, uh, she need to, she very much approachable. I also like to thank you, uh, Community Development Director, and then also Public Works Department. I get a chance to talk to the developer. They're very happy when they apply to any permit, and same thing with the inspection. And, you know, when you talk to the developer, they deal with the different city, and they said, this is, this, this department is very approachable. And they praise this city of Galt, they're, uh, doing a very excellent job. Thank you for Mr. Heinz, uh, doing a great job to keep control of everything, and I also like to thank you for the public comment. Thank you for the local, uh, media, Galt Herald. They were sitting down here in a chamber for two hours. Thank you for proactive in this city, whatever news. Thank you for, uh, Mr. Rashid, coming here to, in this council from the Jim Copper, Jim Cooper's office. Thank you for anybody make a comment, the public. That's our job, and that's my job to listen to the public. Thank you for everybody else, and that's, that's kind of my comment at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Pretty hard to follow that act, but, uh, uh, I would reiterate that, uh, thank you very much for all the, the information given every week. You guys work incredibly hard to inform us as well as you can and answer questions. Besides all of that, I just have one question, um, manager. A while back, I asked about, uh, a vote to open the Flea Market property. I wonder if you could just briefly, uh, update the council on where that stands?
Sure, Councilman. Thank you. Uh, we're currently developing a presentation and a financial analysis of just such, uh, just such a scenario. There, it is a bit more of a comp- more complicated question to answer, and, uh, because there are a lot of moving parts, and there are a lot of vendors, and there are a lot of competitors that we have to, we have to, uh, address in our response to council. So, uh, Armando Solis and his team are pulling together a very, at this point, a very long PowerPoint presentation. We'll cull that down and, uh, get this in front of council probably sometime this fall, and, um, and we'll, um, get that, again, we'll try to get that question answered. Um, it may not be the answer that one would think based on our analysis.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, I, um, just a couple of things, um, kind of along those same lines. Is it possible to get some kind of update in the future, near future, about, uh, putting together a plan, an outreach plan, uh, either through our Park and Rec Commission or, through city staff about, uh, outreach for the lighting and landscape district, uh, issue? Again, doesn't have to be extensive, but just kind of an update of where we're at, and maybe a timeline of where we think we might need to go. I really want to, at least in my mind, uh, after tonight's presentations, I really want to get a handle of what the community needs are and desires are. Uh, I'd hate to, uh, continue to buy a Cadillac if, uh, we want a Ford Escape, right? And, um, and if we want a Ford Escape, let's get a budget that we can continue to maintain that. Um, so that's, that's it on that. Thanks to, uh, Park and Rec staff, and actually, everybody, police department, our, our VIPS, uh, for being out at the IDC parade. Uh, it was so awesome to see, uh, our VIPS out there, uh, many who have been, uh, who have been in contact with, uh, this whole pandemic, and we're really looking forward to getting out and about with friends and community, and it was nice to see that. Um, uh, so, and then also, again, uh, you know, the, I heard great things about the fireworks show. I would happen to be out of town right after the parade, but, uh, so I wasn't able to attend. But, uh, I heard that went very well, and certainly the run, uh, got great reviews. So, uh, to put all that together in a, in a short amount of time, I can't imagine they planned that for a year like they normally do. Uh, just knowing that things change, right? So, uh, so thank you to the staff for that, and I want to thank the staff, specifically the city manager, uh, for taking all the time you did with me this week on, on, uh, staff reports and other things. Uh, man, we, uh, I know I did, I, I normally don't take up that much time, but I appreciate you, uh, humoring me a little bit, and, uh, and, and for all the work that you do in, uh, in the community, community outreach, um, and I appreciate that. So, uh, thank you so much, and that's all I have.
Thank you, council member. So, uh, I will conclude by just saying, uh, first, I want to congratulate our new council members. Kevin's not here tonight, unfortunately, but Councilmember Vandenberg for, for your first, uh, uh, you've been a council member for, what is it, six months, five months now, and it's the first time you actually get to sit in the chambers. So it's got to be kind of a cool experience to see, you know, it's a lot different than playing Brady Bunch on the, on the Zoom screen. Um, and, uh, and to Mr. Heinz, first time sitting in the chambers in, in official capacity, and our, uh, new interim attorney, uh, Mr. Splendario, so to get a feel for, hopefully, you know, we don't know what the future holds, but for tonight, we're all here in a, in our, uh, in our, in our Sunday best, so. And, uh, thanks to IT for getting everything figured out tonight. If they're listening, you know, I know there was, they were working right up to the meeting to try to figure out the logistics of the, uh, phone-in comment and all that stuff, and I think it's been a challenge, but they did a good job because it's pretty smooth, I think, overall tonight. So, um, just want to remind everybody about the C Street Enhancement that Mrs., uh, Ms. Mendez, uh, mentioned. It's very important if you are a business on C Street to try to make that, that walking tour. It's at 3:30. Uh, if you can't make that, please try to make the open house at 5:30 at the Chabola. It's very important that you give input on this. This is, this is going to affect, uh, that, that whole corridor. Um, I think this will be a great project. We need your input, and we want to hear ideas so that they can best develop something that's going to be good for everybody. And, uh, national, so we don't have another council meeting until mid-August, is that correct?
We have a meeting on, uh, August the 3rd.
Oh.
It's a, um, early meeting. It's intended to have a light agenda because we're headed to National Night Out
Okay.
right after that meeting, and then the next meeting is on August, I believe, 17th, and, um, that'll be a pretty full agenda.
Okay. So, yeah, I was just going to mention National Night Out. I couldn't remember if we were doing an early meeting or for, uh, uh, not having that meeting, but National Night Out, August 3rd, it's a great event. Uh, Community Park, uh, Sports Complex, and, uh, the Medivu Park. So if you want to know more information about that, follow the city's webpages and social media, because, uh, it's, it's always a really great event. I look forward to it this year. And, um, thanks again to the Beautification Committee for the community cleanup. Uh, it's going to be the third Saturday of the month, um, moving forward. Uh, we'll try to post things, um, and they will be posting some things. So the third Saturday, if you are interested in helping your community in a huge way, but takes a small amount of your time, a couple hours on a Saturday, we really could use the help, and we're doing great things out there with that, with that cleanup day. So with that, I will wrap this meeting up, and it was good to be back here after 16 months. So I will, uh, adjourn the meeting. Good night, everyone.